Good evening, Chair. Calls are ordered. Legislative session day 22-017. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Jan Giordano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Look after all our first responders, their families. Help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Amen.
Amen. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations. Counsel, this evening, we're honored to have representatives from Churchville Elementary School here this evening to celebrate their 90th birthday. And I would like to ask Ms. Minatola, Mr. Testio, and Ms. Tarrell, please come forward. Councilman Wagner, gentlemen.
Many of us were at a Patriot program the other day at Churchville where we discussed the 90th birthday coming up. And you've got a celebration coming up on, is that this coming Saturday?
June the 4th.
June the 4th, okay. June the 4th. And I wanted you to have this proclamation prior to, so you could have it there on display. And I appreciate you coming out this evening. This is a Hartford County proclamation from the council. Whereas, the original building known as Churchville Consolidated School was built in 1931 and first opened its doors for the '31 and '32 school year to serve the community of Churchville and generations of families. And whereas, throughout the years, the building has undergone additions and renovations and was renamed Churchville Elementary School. And whereas, the mission of Churchville Elementary School is charging towards excellence, working to ensure that all students are prepared for college and/or career, the extensive volunteer programs, a highly active parent-teacher association, and devoted business and community partnerships have proved vital to the success of the Churchville Elementary Program. Therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this 24th day of May 2022, do hereby salute Churchville Elementary School at 2935 Level Road, Churchville, Maryland, on its 90th birthday, and applaud the successes of the staff and the students on this milestone event. Signed by all the council members.
Thank you so much.
Certainly.
Could I have everyone in the front row shift this way just a little bit, please? A little bit more perfect.
And I'm sure you'd like to see a few.
Sure. Thank you. So, yes, as you said, we first opened our doors for the 1931-32 school year 90 years ago. And we, Churchville is a, has a very rich history and is a very close-knit family community. And we are proud to say that 90 years later, we are still that same way. And on behalf of our entire student body, past, present, and future, we are proud of this milestone and hope that we have many of you to celebrate with us on June 4th.
Anybody else? You all good?
We thank you for all you do, and certainly it is a great star in the neighborhood there in Churchville. Thank you.
Thank you for supporting our school.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you. Agenda item number five and six, that we have no business this evening. Agenda number seven, approval of minutes. Spring 2022 Board of Health update, May 17, 2022. Public hearing, May 17, 2022. Legislative day 22-016, May 17, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Counsel may have general consent to temporarily skip item eight to complete agenda items nine through 12 and return to item eight after.
So moved.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, we have no business. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. Mr. Wagner, please read amendments 15 through 55 into the record for introduction.
Amendment number 15, on page 41 and line eight, strike $200,000 and substitute $400,000 to increase the Parks and Recreation Capital Project tennis and multipurpose pickleball courts in the amount of $200,000. Amendment number 16, on page 42 and line 10, strike $786,000 and substitute $572,045. And this is to correct the prior bond amount reallocated to the Water and Sewer Capital Project Brentwood Park Pumping Station. Amendment number 17, on page 35, between lines 11 and 12, insert the following. Prior bonds in perenns 2059, to, this is to reallocate prior bond funds in the amount of $2059. Amendment number 18, on page 37, between lines 29 and 30, insert the following. Roof replacement Hickory Elementary School in perenns 2059, to add the Board of Education Capital Project roof replacement Hickory Elementary School in the amount of $2059. Amendment number 19, on page 35, between lines 11 and 12, insert the following. Prior bonds, $1,502,525. This is to reallocate prior bond funds in the amount of $1,502,525. Amendment number 20, on page 37, between lines 29 and 30, insert the following. Roof replacement Bel Air Middle School, $1,502,525, to add the Board of Education Capital Project roof replacement to the Bel Air Middle School in the amount of $1,502,525. Amendment number 21, on page 35, between lines 11 and 12, insert the following. Prior bonds, $1,380,000. This is to reallocate prior bond funds in the amount of $1,380,000. Amendment number 22, on page 37, between lines 23 and 24, insert the following. HCPS site improvements, $1,380,000, to add the Board of Education Capital Project HCPS site improvements in the amount of $1,380,000. Amendment number 23, on page 35, between lines 11 and 12, insert the following. Prior bonds, $100,000, to reallocate prior bond funds in the amount of $100,000. Amendment number 24, on page 37, between lines 19 and 20, insert the following. Athletic and recreation repairs and improvements, $100,000. This is to add the Board of Education Capital Project athletic and recreation repairs and improvements in the amount of $100,000. Amendment number 25, on page 35, between lines 11 and 12, insert the following. Prior bonds, $24,584. This is to out, reallocate prior bond funds in the amount of $24,584. Amendment number 26, on page 37, between lines 26 and 27, insert the following. Major HVAC, $24,584, to add the Board of Education Capital Project major HVAC in the amount of $24,584. Amendment number 27, on page 35 and line 16, strike $1,237,682 and substitute $2,37,682 to increase other funds in the amount of $800,000. Amendment number 28, on page 37, between lines 23 and 24, insert the following. HCPS site improvements, $800,000. This is to add the Board of Education Capital Projects HCPS site improvements to the amount, in the amount of $800,000. Amendment number 29, on page 35 and line 16, strike $1,237,682 and substitute $5,237,682 to increase other funds in the amount of $4 million. Amendment number 30, on page 37, between lines 23 and 24, insert the following. HCPS facilities repair program, $4 million, to add the Board of Education Capital Project HCPS facilities repair program in the amount of $4 million. Amendment number 31, on page 35 and line 16, strike $1,237,682 and substitute $1,687,682 to increase other funds in the amount of $450,000. Amendment number 32, on page 37, between lines 26 and 27, insert the following. Major HVAC, $450,000, to add the Board of Education Capital Project major HVAC in the amount of $450,000. Amendment number 33, on page 11, sorry, on page 35, between lines 11 and 12, insert the following. Prior bonds, zero, to a balance prior bonds from amendments 17, 19, 21, 23, and 25. Amendment number 34, on page 35 and line 16, strike $1,237,682 and substitute $6,487,682 to balance other funds from amendments 27, 29, and 31. Amendment number 35, on page 35 and line 18, strike $222,892,222,892,000 and substitute $228,142,000 to balance the estimated revenues available for appropriation, general capital fund for a total increase of $5,250,000. Amendment number 36, on page 37, between lines 23 and 24, insert the following. HCPS site improvements, $2,180,000, to balance the Board of Education Capital Project HCPS site improvements to the amount, in the amount of $2,180,000 from the amendments 22 and 28. Amendment number 37, on page 37, between lines 26 and 27, insert the following. Major HVAC, $474,584, to balance the Board of Education Capital Project major HVAC in the amount of $474,584 from amendments 26 and 32. Amendment number 38, on page 37 and line 34, strike $222,822,892,000 and substitute $228,142,000 to balance total appropriations, general capital fund in the amount of $5,250,000. Amendment number 39, on page 40 and line 6, strike $1,900,000 and substitute $3,306,315 to balance state program open space funds in the amount of $1,406,315 from amendments number 1, 3, and 5. Amendment number 40, on page 40 and line 10, strike $14,695,000 and substitute $17,601,315 to balance the total estimated revenues available for appropriation, Parks and Recreation Capital Fund in the amount of $2,906,315. Amendment number 41, on page 41 and line 12, strike $14,695,000 and substitute $17,601,315 to balance total appropriations, Parks and Recreation Capital Fund in the amount of Amendment number 42, on page 42, between lines 4 and 5, insert the following. Prior bonds, zero, to balance prior bond funds from amendments number 9 and 11. Amendment number 43, on page 42 and line 7, strike $10,100,000 and substitute $10,315,000 to balance total estimated revenue available for appropriation, Sewer Capital Fund in the amount of $215,000. Amendment number 44, on page 42 and line 10, strike $786,000 and substitute $787,045 to balance the Sewer Capital Project Brentwood Park Pump Station improvements in the amount of $1,045 from amendments 12 and 14. Amendment number 45, on page 42 and line 18, strike $10,100,000 and substitute $10,315,000 to balance the total appropriations, Sewer Capital Fund in the amount of $215,000. Amendment number 46, on page 44 and line 17, strike $269,520,000 and substitute $277,423,315 to balance total all capital budget, total all capital budget appropriations in the amount of $8,371,315. Amendment number 47, on page 58 and line 23, strike $1,237,682 and substitute $6,487,682. And this is to balance the developer other general capital fund for a total increase of $5,250,000. Amendment number 48, on line, on page 40, on page 58 and line 24, strike $222,892,000 and substitute $228,142,000 to balance total estimated revenues fiscal year 2023, general capital fund for a total increase of $5,250,000. Amendment number 49, on page 58 and line 25, strike in perenns $222,892,000 and substitute in perenns $228,142,000 to balance the estimated expenditures fiscal year 2023, general capital fund for a total increase of $5,250,000. Amendment number 50, on page 60 and line 14, strike $2,400,000 and substitute $5,306,315 to balance state grant Parks and Recreation Capital Fund for a total increase of $2,906,315. Amendment number 51, on page 60 and line 16, strike $14,695,000 and substitute $17,601,315 to balance total estimated revenues fiscal year 2023, Parks and Rec Capital Fund for a total increase of $2,906,315. Amendment number 52, on page 60 and line 17, strike in perenns $14,695,000 and substitute in perenns $17,601,316. This is to balance the estimated expenditures fiscal year 2023, Parks and Rec Capital Fund for a total increase of $2,906,315. Amendment number 53, on page 61 and line 10, strike $10,750,000 and substitute $10,965,000. This is to balance the future county bonds, Water and Sewer Capital Fund for a total increase of $215,000. Amendment number 54, on page 61 and line 11, strike $15,30,000 and substitute $15,245,000 to balance the total estimated revenues fiscal year 2023, Water and Sewer Capital Fund in the amount of $215,000. Amendment number 55, on page 61 and line 12, strike in perenns $15,30,000 and substitute in perenns $15,245,000 to balance the estimated expenditures fiscal year 2023 for a total increase of $215,000.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Well done. Counsel, right now, to speak to some of these amendments and the voting blocks that we're getting ready to add. We have Ms. Spence, Chief Budget Advisor, and Cornell Brown, Superintendent from Schools of Operations. Guys could come forward.
Do you want me to go by voting blocks?
Yeah, I think so. But before you do, I guess I'm going to open it up for counsel, just if they have any questions at all, because I think most of them pretty well understand that we have in front of us. Cornell, I want to thank you for taking the time to bring the Board of Ed's capital projects over, so that I can understand the amendments and stuff and be able to help share with the council here. So I want to just thank you for that. Counsel, do you have any particular questions at all, Mr. Giordano?
So, why so many amendments?
Most of them are balancers.
Yes.
So, for, you change $1, you have to go back and balance everything. If you add a project in more than one time, because it depends on if you vote for the amendment, we'll have to balance that. So that's why.
So I did see one or two, basically amendment number 47. It was a change from $1,237,000 to $6,487,000, which was an increase of $5,200,000, to balance develop other. Is that just a, that's a?
It's, it's, it's the code, it's the name we use for the title of that funding source. And I will tell you that that $5,250,000 is all the Board of Ed's fund balance coming into, into their capital.
Okay, that's what that is? Okay. And then there was a couple other ones that were all $2,900, they were all amendment 50, 51, and 52, and are all increases of $2,906,315, three of them. So what is that for?
That is for the Parks and Rec. That's to balance the fund balance statement for the capital budget for Parks and Rec.
Okay. So, take a project, or what, what do we?
No, they were bringing, they were bringing in more program open space money.
Okay.
And more local planning for playground money. It's a DNR grant.
So that was some federal, federal.
That's more money that they were bringing in that we got notified of after the budget came over, so.
Okay.
We put it in the project.
Let me see what else cleared out, but just, just trying to figure some of this stuff out, that's all. Okay.
I'll move on to someone else while you're looking. Anyone else?
I guess the other one big increase, it's probably what you're telling me to, and it looks like it's amendment 35, $222 million to $228 million. That's probably general capital.
This is general capital. This is the Board of Ed.
Okay. All right.
All right. Anyone else, questions? Do you guys want to add anything else? The only thing I would ask is, if I understand it correctly, you're withdrawing amendments four and 12?
Correct.
And then replace with amendments 15 and 16?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Then if there's no other questions, I think we are going to consider these amendments tonight, so that we can move. And with that said, Mr. Wagner, may I have a motion for voting block one?
I would move for the approval of voting block number one.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Bula. It's moved in second to approve voting block one. Any comments, counsel? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative and one absent. Amendments 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 15 are hereby approved. May I have a motion, Mr. Wagner, for voting block two?
I would move for the approval of voting block number two.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's moved in second to approve voting block two. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 7 and 8 are hereby approved. May I have a motion, Mr. Wagner, for number three?
I move to approve voting block number three.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's moved in second to approve voting block three. Any comments, counsel? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 16 are hereby approved. May I have a motion for voting block four?
Move for approval of voting block number four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's been moved in second to approve voting block four. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
I mean, six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 17 and 26 are hereby approved. May I have a motion for voting block five?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second to move voting block five. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 27 through 32 are hereby approved. May I have a motion on voting block six?
Move for approval of voting block number six.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's moved in second to move, or to consider voting block six. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Thank you. There's six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 33 through 38 are hereby approved. May I have a motion for voting block seven?
Move to approve voting block number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's moved in second for voting block six. May I, any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative and one absent. Amendments 39 through 41 are hereby approved. May I have a motion for voting block eight?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's been moved in second to approve voting block eight. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 42 through 46 are hereby approved. May I have a motion on voting block nine?
Move to approve voting block number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's moved in second to move voting block nine. Are there any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 47 and 49 are hereby, through 49, are hereby approved. May I have a motion on voting block 10?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's moved in second to approve voting block 10. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 50 through 52 are hereby approved. May I have a motion for voting block 11?
Move to approve voting block number 11.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Thank you, Mr. Bula. It's moved in second to move voting block number 11. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Amendments 50 through 55 are hereby approved. B, memorandum of change to resolution 017-22, capital improvement program, may I have a motion? Anyone?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bula.
You got a rhythm going, you prove it. You're turning that heat thing. Turned me off.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution 017-22. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent. Six votes in the affirmative, one absent, memorandum of change number one to resolution 017 is hereby, or 017-22 is hereby approved. Agenda number 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 22-007, charter amendment, removal of council members, may I have a motion? Mr. Wagner?
I would move for the approval of bill number 22-007.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. It's been moved in second to move bill 22-007, any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, bill 22-007 is hereby approved. Bill 22-008, zoning entertainment and event center, may I have a motion? Mr. Janjordano?
Uh, make a motion to approve bill number 22-008.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schrude. It's been moved in second to move bill 22-008, any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, bill 22-008 is hereby approved. Bill 22-009, annual budget appropriation ordinance as amended, may I have a motion? Mr. Wagner?
Move to approve bill number 22-009 as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Bill 22-009 is moved in second, any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent, bill 22-009 as amended is hereby approved. Bill 22-010, pay plan and classification plan, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Wagner?
Move for approval of bill 22-010, pay plan and classification plan.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. It's been moved in second to approve bill 22-010, any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one absent, bill 22-010 is hereby approved. Agenda item number 12, enrollment of bills, bill 22-007, charter amendment, removal of council members, bill 22-008, zoning entertainment and event center, bill 22-009, annual budget appropriation ordinance as amended, bill 22-010, pay plan and classification plan are certified as being the text finally passed. Agenda item number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions, resolution 016-22, adoption of property tax rate, may I have a motion? Mr. Wagner?
Move to approve resolution number 016-22.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved in second to approve resolution 016-22, any comments, counsel? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, resolution 016-22 is hereby approved. Resolution 017-22, capital improvement program as amended, may I have a motion? Mr. Wagner?
Move for approval of resolution 07-22.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Schrude.
Did you say as amended?
Yes, I did. It is a move, it is moved and seconded to consider resolution 017-22 as amended, any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, resolution 017-22 as amended is hereby approved. 13 and 14, we have no business tonight. I'm gonna skip 15 and go to the council member's business from council members, um, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Council President, I, I'll just be very brief, and, uh, I just want to thank everyone for, uh, the well wishes, uh, I was out, uh, sick last week, so, thank you to everyone for, um, the well wishes, and thank you, council members, even though you may not know that you sent me some delicious, uh, soup, but, um, thank you so much, uh, for, for looking out for me, and, um, I'm back to, uh, to get on your nerves, so, thank you very much.
Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President, I was also out sick, uh, bad chicken, um, anyway, so, uh, miss, I missed National Police Week, but, uh, just being an officer is one of the hardest positions, so I am very thankful for, uh, all, all our police troopers, sheriff deputies, um, their work for law and order is the best in, uh, county and state and probably the country, so I want to just, uh, give a shout out to them, and, uh, thank you very much, that's it, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano, and Mr. Schrude.
Yes, thank you, Council President, uh, last night the Bar Association hosted an inveter, investisher, gosh, I can't really tangle it up, um, of the Honorable Angela Eves to the Court of Appeals of Maryland, Judge Eves is the first Hispanic and first Harford County resident appointed to the clerk, to, to the Court of Appeals in more than 100 years, I would also like to wish Judge Angela Eves' successor, Judge Yvonda Curtin, the very best as the county administrative judge for the service for the Harford County. Also, as was said earlier, um, several of us attended, um, some Patriot programs, including Churchville and Darlington, those kids just worked their butts off, these, um, um, two of these programs are very well done, they're, they're, I think, um, top notch in the county, they work really hard, and, and they include community service pros, projects, and, just, just really amazing. Um, Hartford Family House hosted their Ohui event, cocktails, um, by the bay, and I know that you and Jeannie were, um, co-hosts, and you did a nice job there, but Jeannie spoke and did an amazing job, you were there early and came late, so, but it was very nice. And then also, several of us, of us attended the Harford County Chamber of Commerce Military Appreciation luncheon by the Chamber of Commerce, and that again was, um, a very nice event, and, um, well done by the Chamber. Also, I had the, uh, pleasure of attending the Alseski Scholarship Fund Annual Awards Banquet, congratulations to all the nominees, but a special, um, congratulations to Don Peyton of Aberdeen High School and Haley Sullivan of Havity Grace High School. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrude, Mr. Wagner?
On, uh, this past Saturday, I know several of us attended, uh, there was a concert for hope, uh, uh, for Emily Evans who lost her life about six years ago to, uh, opioid overdose, and her parents were there at the tower for this, uh, concert, it was an all-day event, and, uh, it raised, uh, a good amount of money, and it's, it's an annual event, and I would encourage anybody to seek it out and go to it next year to try to, uh, support the event, because it's got a great cause to it, trying to fight the opioid in our, uh, in our children. Uh, tonight seems to be Churchville's night, because we are also celebrating Ms. Ashley Gurelli as, uh, Harford County Public School Teacher of the Year 2021, who is from Churchville Elementary School, and as you said earlier, and I said too, that it was a great event for the, uh, the Patriot Program, Churchville always does a great job on that. Uh, today I enjoyed Career Day at Hall's Crossroads in Aberdeen, uh, got to speak to three different fourth grade classes there for about a half hour each, and that was, uh, that was, that was a great experience, I, um, uh, the children were very engaging and, uh, had great questions, and it was, it was a very nice event, and with that, I'm good, thank you.
You're good.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Bueller.
Thank you, Council President, just one thing, for all the prayer warriors out there, uh, if we could remember the families in, uh, Texas that lost children today and the teacher, I mean, it's just sad, and so if we could remember them to, uh, pray for them for comfort and strength, I'm sure this is a very difficult time, so, if, uh, like I said, if you could remember all those families in your prayers tonight, um, that's all I have, Council President.
Well said, Mr. Bueller. Back to agenda item number 15, uh, the one thing that, uh, business that we need to take care of tonight, counsel, as you're aware, the charter provides that we meet every Tuesday in the month of May for the purpose of the completion of the budget, um, since we completed the fiscal '23 budget this evening, uh, may I have a motion to cancel the 20, May 31st legislative session? Mr. Wagner?
I would move that we cancel May 31st, uh, session, since we did complete the budget this evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bueller. It's been moved in second to cancel May 31st meeting, any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schrude?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Six votes in the affirmative, one in the absence, or one absent, the cancellation of May 31st, 2022 legislation is hereby approved, um, and I'm glad that, uh, Councilman Bueller brought up, uh, Texas, because it was a big part of what I sketched in here at the end, and it's on a piece of paper where we recognize so many positive things from our schools, it's just unimaginable that those families are going through this tonight. Um, I did want to recognize and mention the, uh, Edgewood High School's Academy of Finance, uh, senior breakfast that they had this week, uh, we were able to attend that along with Ms. Brooks from the Audit Department, and along with, uh, Kilo Mack, the principal there, and also Mr. Chuck Hunter, uh, outstanding event, uh, the children, or the students there do an outstanding job, and each year, uh, during the summer session, we were able to, uh, get a couple of them to serve as, as, um, gosh, interns, I guess, for the summer, so, it's a great program, and then also I want to, uh, recognize again that Ms. Jen Swanson is leaving the Humane Society, uh, we were able to present her with a proclamation along with the county executive, uh, the other day, and so, uh, she will be missed. And then finally, um, uh, Jeannie and I were able to attend an outstanding dinner with, uh, Major General and Ellen Edmondson at quarters one on the post, and, uh, we were able to catch up on some things and talk about, um, things such as Woodley Road, so, uh, it was very positive, and, um, just an outstanding evening, uh, on base, so, with that, um...
I forgot to say happy birthday to you.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry to speak out of...
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I appreciate that. Thirty-nine, man, thirty-nine. Um, uh, Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up for comments from attending citizens?
We have two this evening, Mr. President. Kate McDonald, followed by Bill Whalen.
I don't see Ms. McDonald, but I do see Mr. Whalen.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening, council members, Mr. Vicetti, I didn't want to really be